All right, at 6:30 we'll call the meeting to order if we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. That is the republic which stands one nation under God, in the great civil with every just as well.
Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We'll open up for public comments, if there's anyone who would like to come forward and discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close public comments, move to consent agenda, if there's anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion. If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion? Just one comment, it's great to see another generation of Metzl joining the fire department. I think that's great, it's certainly, the family commitment is unparalleled, so I do appreciate that.
That's awesome.
Yep, it's very, very awesome.
Four, four or five generations, four?
Four.
Pretty cool.
Fourth generation.
So cool.
That is great. It's unparalleled commitment. We'll move to six eight one, Mendat Highway 25, city project funding approval.
Mayor and council, as you're aware, Mendat's been planning the Highway 25 city project from the city of Watertown into Mare, just to where County Road 30 is. And so, we've had several discussions on what they will be doing and when, and just a little summary, just because the project has gotten pushed back a little bit due to COVID-19, in 2000, in, starting on August 3rd, 2020, they'll be starting the project with a mill and overlay in Mare, and then a few weeks, Dave can maybe assist me with this, but this fall, they will be doing the ADA improvements to the sidewalks and, and to the corners with ramps as well in the city of Mare. They will also be doing some utility moving of the lamps or the lights, so that the sidewalks can be ADA compliant. And then, they will also be adding a sidewalk from the roundabout at the school up to Fifth So, at the May 11th, 2020 meeting, the city council approved the agreement with Mendat, that just highlighted the responsibilities of both parties. So, at that time, before they put the project out to bid, they projected the financial responsibilities to be about, for the city to be about $49,851.55. That included the pedestrian crosswalk near the current fire station. That was estimated to be $19,100. After the project was bid, however, it came in higher, so the project came in at $58,901.28. And that include, that, the majority of that is with the crosswalk, so it was nine, projected to be about $19,100, and it went up to $26,000. So, tonight, the council's being asked whether to include that pedestrian crosswalk or not in the project, we would have to notify Mendat immediately what our decision is. The, we did install a crosswalk by Casey's and with Public Works doing that, it was a little bit more, or a little less complicated, it was, they just had to kind of create a base and install the crosswalk that way, and, or the crosswalk, or the pedestrian crossing, and it was about $11,000 for that project. I know me and Dave talked about it a little bit earlier, the city engineer, and again, the question is whether, whether to include it in, in the project now. If we excluded it, the city's portion would go down to $32,901.28. But the, the question is, what are the pros and cons? Like, do we, do we have Mendat do it now with the project when they're, they're also increasing the sidewalk into the street a little bit more, installing it that way? Or, another option would be to wait and do it later, possibly. But I think there were some concerns when I talked to the engineer about what would happen if we installed it, it could be cheaper, but then we'd also have to think about a Mendat permit, and then also disrupting some of the base that they're currently installing, which would be the concrete. So, with that, we're, I'm open for any questions, I think Dave had, is pretty knowledgeable on it as well, so we're just kind of looking for direction as to where to go with the pedestrian crossing. And then also seek approval with or without the pedestrian crossing for the city's portion.
Dave, is there anything you need to add or want to add?
You know, not really, you know, we had estimated this earlier, I do think that if it's something you're interested in doing, if you think it's needed, probably the cleanest time to do it is when they're doing the rest of construction. What I don't know with the cost that they've given us is typically, you know, there's some signage that has to go up with, with this advanced, I don't know if that's included in this number that makes it change, and then also, you know, some pavement markings, things like that. So, I, they didn't itemize it like that for us, but, you know, it would be something you could come back and do after the fact, I suppose, again, I think the, the cleanest way to do it is at the same time as the rest of the construction, if you believe that it's needed in that location, something that has come up on and off for, for a long time, that you get a lot of pedestrian traffic there, and, you know, it's really up to you as to whether or not you want to proceed. Mendat is waiting for us to kind of give them the go-ahead. So, we're just going to need a decision.
Any other questions for Maggie or Dave?
Well, I know back in January of 2020, we did vote and to do the pedestrian street crossing, but not to exceed $15,000. So, they've almost doubled it, from $15,000 to $26,000, so.
Yeah, and I think we were waiting to see what the bids, council was waiting to see what the bids came in at, and I agree, they are significantly high.
But if I do recall, we weren't sure how, because of where it's going to be located, it's not as easy of an installation as it was our previous one, just because it's all cement at that corner, and we weren't sure about electricity on this side of 25. So, I mean, I think it's needed, I mean, I crossed that section a lot, and I think we were, they were going to adjust it so it's more straight and not in an angle, and make some adjustments that I don't know if waiting till after, I don't, I think it's a highly used.
Right, yeah, I agree.
Section.
Well, according to their drawings, it would still be somewhat at an angle.
I think it was still being corrected, it's like, I don't know, I don't, that's just what I recall.
I know there was discussion about that, but looking at the renderings here.
And the only thing I would add to is, so you have the one at Hidden Creek Boulevard, you'd have the one at Fourth Street, and I know that up in the Watertown portion of the project, they're also putting in a couple of these that, I think it's High Street and.
State.
Was it Water?
Oh.
What did I?
I forget what you said.
Anyway, so, if you're driving this Highway 25 corridor, it would be consistent with the other crossings that are there.
Mrs. Bolton Mink, this isn't Mendat.
All right, any other questions? Either for a motion to approve the Highway 25 Mendat Agreement 1036535 for the amount of $58,901.28, including the pedestrian crosswalk, or a motion to approve the agreement without the pedestrian crosswalk for $32,901.28.
I will make a motion to approve the project without the crosswalk.
All right, we have a motion to approve without a crosswalk for $32,901.28, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion dies with the lack of a second. Any other motions?
I'll make a motion for the full 58, nine, to include the crosswalk.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agreement for $58,901.28, including the crosswalk, do we have a second? Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Well, at one point, we talked about being able to just have them prep it, and then we would do some work on installing it, and that would save us some money, is that still the case?
Well, that was, what I was talking to Dave about today is what we, what we were thinking.
We don't really know what they bid.
Right, you know, that, that would be the question, if he still were expecting, putting the foundations, do the, get it set up for you, then you're talking about the difference in the materials cost and the, the labor to install it, and, and I can't tell you what savings there may or may not be there.
My concern with that is, we won't have the cement warranty around it then, so if we go in and install it, and we start cracking it, then we're on the hook for, for all that, so that's a big concern of mine. Typically, I wouldn't, I would be opposed to this sort of an increase, I see the safety need, obviously, but ultimately, for this project, to get our lights moved, we get ADA sidewalks, new sidewalks, an additional sidewalk connecting up to the roundabout, and now the flashers for $58,000, for that reason, I still think the city mayor's coming out ahead on this deal.
Yeah, and we might get more people using it with the sidewalk going all the way up to the roundabout.
And I don't disagree, I just, I wish we could put it in at a significant savings, because it just seems like such a big jump. I mean, $26,000 for a pedestrian crossing, when we have done it in the past for 11?
But I think that's just.
That's where I struggle.
I think the reason why it's more expensive is because it's a little trickier, and that's what even our Kyle and Jason said, was that it was a little bit trickier of a installation than the previous one, and that might be the reason of it, I mean, I don't know, I'm making an assumption, so.
All right, any further discussion? We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Six B one, water treatment plant and water tower projects, please.
I can start, and then I'll let Dave, Dave wrote the memos in your packet, but I just wanted to give you a little background, so, as you're aware, we will be starting the water treatment plant and water tower pro, and the well, and then the water tower projects this fall. So, in October of 2019, the city authorized Bolton and Mink to prepare the plans and specs for the tower rehab, I'll do the tower first, tower rehab project, that includes sandblasting, surface repairs, and painting of the exterior. And then, at the April 27th meeting, the plans were completed, and the city authorized it to go out for bid. And then, at, on June 5th, we did receive the, the, we did receive bids, and the project was approved and awarded to MK Painting in the amount of $271,550. So, when we originally estimated this, this project, we estimated it to be around $410,000. And so, with that, we, that was, that included the painting and the rehabbing, it included the engineer doing the tower design and bidding, and it also included engineer costs for project management and closeout. We just, we've approved the tower design and bidding of the engineer, we just haven't improved the engineering costs for the project management and closeout, and so, that's what we're looking at tonight, is, but that was included in the estimate last year when we put this project together. And so, the current estimated total is around $327,550 for the entire project, and so.
Roll down, so that.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Page 51.
Sorry.
51.
Sorry, this is a large packet.
Mm-hmm. It's really big.
Okay, so, here's what I'm kind of talking about. So, yeah, and this project was and continues to be part of the capital improvement plan, and so, with that, the city administrator, myself, and the financial consultant have reviewed financial options for the project, and we're currently, this is going to come to another session, but we're, one of the options is to pay cash for the project, or to do like a, a small loan for it, but that'll come at a later date, but, so that's, that's the first part of this, is that we're seeking the engineering approval of $31,000 for the water tower project management and closeout. And then, we have the well and water treatment plant rehab project that had the similar process of Bolton and Mink preparing plans, getting the city's authorization to approve, putting it out for bid, and that one came in at, for the, this is for the water treatment plant and well upgrades, that came in at the lowest bid of $980,171. So, again, and that was awarded to Minnesota Mechanical Solutions, so, um, the, so that, let's go down, so, we have the contractor price, the water treatment plant design and bidding, that was already approved for the engineer, and then the well design and bidding, and then the project management closeout is 110 for the engineer, that's what we're seeking approval for, and that was also included in the estimate. And then later, we'll be discussing this project again, because we are looking to finance this, get approval for the final 20-year, or, get approval of the 20-year loan that we've applied for with the Public Facilities Authority. So, Dave, if you want to go into a little bit further, that's, that's kind of what we're looking at for this item, is the, the cost approval for the, for, for all three projects, for the engineer to do the project management and closeout of these projects.
Yeah, so, really, this should have come at the same time that you're approving the construction project. When we look back on it, we realize that you only approved the design through the bidding part when, when the project was originally approved. As Maggie said, these costs have always been included in the overall estimates for the project, but we never brought the construction service piece of this to you for your approval, so, that's what it is here for. As you can see, the majority of the costs associated with the project are the observation. I can tell you that the, the design fees for the tower were about $10,000 less than the, the fee estimate we had given you, and it looks like the, the wastewater project is about right on budget for the fees that were approved, so, if I, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And so, these, these are nothing new, these, this is housekeeping as it is.
These have always been included in the, the numbers you've been given.
Everyone's seen them.
But the approval of the services never came to you.
Yeah.
And like I say, that, that's, I apologize for that, that should have been at the same time you were approving the construction contract, but we, we missed the fact that you had only approved the first part of the engineering, not the back half.
And the well and water, coming in about $20,000 less than we, the numbers we originally saw. Is that what you said?
No, the, the tower, the engineering, the through bidding for the engineering fees with the towers, about $10,000 less than the fee estimate.
Okay.
And the water treatment plant and the well is about, essentially right at budget, or through bidding.
All right, Maggie, do you want separate motions on these?
Um, yeah, that'd be great.
I, I think you should, just because of the funding separate for, or different for the water.
Right, right.
Plant and the well.
I would agree. I'll look for a motion to accept the project management, engineering closeout costs for the water tower project of $31,000.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
I'll look for a motion to approve the well and water treatment plant rehab project for the project management closeout engineering fees of $110,000.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Six B two, the pond assessment summary.
Yeah, so I'll start, I'll let Dave kind of go into this a little bit more detail. So, as you're aware, the council approved Bolton and Mink to do a stormwater pond assessment plan for the city. So, in your packet tonight is a very lengthy document that highlights the assessment of the stormwater ponds in the city of Mare. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to get an idea of, you know, these ponds have come with development, and they're, they're hitting 20 to 25 years average, and with that, we just need to start thinking about kind of annual planning and long-term planning for these ponds, and so, this is kind of the first step in the process, just kind of seeing what we have, and what the status is of inlets, outlets, kind of what's, what's growing in them, and, and the like. So, with that, I'll let Dave Martini, the city engineer, take over.
Sure, and, and you have the electronic copy, is that, is that all in the packet?
It is, yeah.
So, as you can see, you have 45 stormwater ponds in town, so it's, it's not insignificant by any means, and that's the discussion we've been having, is, over time here, you know, there is a maintenance responsibility and, and costs associated with maintaining these ponds so that they function as they were originally designed. Ponds do a couple of things, they're there for rate control, so that the amount of runoff that's coming off the hardcover in our developments and throughout town, that we can kind of gather that, store it for a while, and release it at a rate that the overall system can handle it. And then, the other piece of this is water quality, so ponds are sized, again, to hold that, that water that comes to them, retains it for a while, drops sediment out that carries pollutants, and holds them in the pond as the, the cleaner water moves downstream. So, we've gone through, and we've done the assessments of all 45 ponds, which is what you have, you know, that's been given to you in your packet, and if you take a look at that, what you'll see is, you know, we've, we've gone through, identified the pond, looked at several different factors from a maintenance standpoint, and also, we've taken a look at it from an access standpoint. If you were to go in and do some maintenance here, what, if anything, might be in your way to be able to get at the places you need to be. As Maggie mentioned, for the most part, your ponds have all been constructed in a relatively similar timeframe, so not surprisingly, they're all in similar conditions. And when you look through, and especially if you take a look at the, the pictures that are in here, what you'll see is primarily, it's the inlets and the outlets that really have a lot of, you know, you can see, this is a perfect example, where you'll see some debris at the outlets, you have spots where the riprap that's been put around there for erosion control, starting to break down, and, and move around a little bit. So, that's one of the main issues, you can also see kind of in the, the bottom left there, a lot of trees and things starting to grow up around the ponds, especially in the areas that the ponds were built, and a part of the development that wasn't developed right away, so they kind of sat there and, and were allowed to really just kind of grow wild for a while. So, again, as you move through this, you'll see a lot of the similarities as to how these look. As we looked at it, we think that probably the first thing from a maintenance standpoint that makes sense is that you start budgeting every year some amount of money to go in and start cleaning out around those inlets and outlets, if there's trees and growth around them, getting that cleaned out, going in repairing the riprap around there, so that we have good erosion control in places where we're just starting to get debris caught up, sometimes it's just trash, sometimes it's, you know, yard waste, whatever, trying to get those cleaned out, so that those inlets and outlets are working as efficiently as possible, which really, from a, from a flow standpoint, will be important. The next step then would be, at some point, starting to kind of take the next phase of this, is really looking at the volume of the ponds, over time, as they start filling with sediment, you start to lose some of the volume, and that's where you, one, again, from a rate control, but certainly from a water quality standpoint, you start losing some of that detention time, and you don't get the same treatment in them. We think that that's probably, again, a phase two, and something that we look at more long-term, but the more immediate issue from a maintenance standpoint is really those inlets and outlets. The other thing I would say is, we've gone through, and we've noted all the things from an access standpoint, if there's a fence in the way, a shed in the way, if there's landscaping, those sorts of things, we've noted that for each one of these ponds. I think, over the course of, you know, you pick the time period, going through there, identifying those, and sending out some letters to property owners, just letting them know that this is a potential issue, that you're looking to do maintenance, and just make them aware if they have some obstructions in the way. I think the plan would be, is if we move forward, and we're going to do cleaning in a specific area, we'd notify the property owners, work with them, the goal would still be to, you know, the least amount of impact, the easiest way in and out, doesn't mean if you have a fence there that it has to come down, but what it might mean is, you have to agree to let us access the, the outlet in another manner, those sorts of things. So, I think if nothing else, just kind of, again, starting to educate the residents that have some of those things in the way, would be a positive. Again, all of them in similar shape, for the most part, I would say that if you were to start scheduling dollars, you'd start with just picking an appropriate budget number as you see fit, and then that would dictate how long it would take you to get through the system. From a prioritization standpoint, we think it would make sense more to do it geographically, kind of pick a, an area and start moving through like that. With that said, I think, you know, we'd want to engage the public works staff and just make sure, if there's some things that, that they know are maintenance problems for them, or kind of ongoing issues, that those would be given priority, but that is, that's the gist of it. You have the electronic copy, this is what it looks like if you print it out, I'd be happy to get you hard copies, if that's an easier way for you to, to manage it and look through it, but we think it's, it's pretty complete, and it's going to be a good reference now for years to come, and for your public works people to kind of be able to go through this now, know exactly what they got, and what this stuff looks like.
Very thorough, very great.
Appreciate it.
Any questions for Mr. Martini?
Sorry, trying to get through it.
If we don't have any, what I would suggest is, we get together as a, a public works committee, from what I went through, it looks like we have 11 of them that are ranked at high priority, and I think we should get a handle on those, see what we need to do immediately, you know, on those 11, and start kind of getting through those to see what needs to be done for those before they get too far, you know, where we really have to get in there and, and spend extra money, so.
And I think this is, this, the timing of this is probably good, as you start to move more into your detailed budget discussions.
Yeah.
Looking ahead to next year as to what a potential project might be for you. I think that this is probably more in the lines of us giving information to public works, and them going out and just getting quotes to, to do it. I don't think that there's a lot of engineering involved in this, it's just kind of knowing where you're going, how you're going to get in there, and really, a list of quantities, probably.
I agree, so let's try to get a, a public work scheduled next. If you want to come up to the podium, that'd be great, if you could state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Karen Drahash, and my husband and I moved here a year ago this month, we live at 1210, Hidden Creek Boulevard. I've had a chance to look at this report, and I realized that really it has to do with the be able to get water in and out of, you know, for the storm sewers, but the concern that we have, myself and a neighbor, and many others, is the pungent smell, which is the. smell, which is the algae that are in these ponds. And we're on pond number 23, which appears to be the third largest of all the ponds. We're in the, it looks like fourth addition, so whatever that means. I know that our home was built in 2005. So my question would be, is there any way that as a part of all of this, there can be a treatment program to these ponds where houses, you know, are around them? Last August, after, we closed on our home on July the 11th, and prior to closing on it, we went for a walk-through. And as I'm standing up in the guest room and I'm looking down at that pond, which on the day of our purchase agreement was like 50% clear water. It was 100% scum-filled, 100%, and then we went to the closing. And when it came fall and the ice started to form, it was green ice. And we're back to all, and in August, we couldn't sit on our deck because of the smell was so bad. So what is it that possibly could be done? There's all, I've been reading up on algae, and I know that there are different treatments that are safe for fish and vegetation. I don't know what fish are in there, if any. There's turtles. So I guess as an engineer, and you were doing, I don't know, do you have a, an aquatic engineer at that level who can tell us? I mean, there are pellets that can be thrown. There's, you know, air, air systems or, you know, what am I trying to call it?
Arierators.
Thank you. Arierators. To move that, at least move it, that would help with it. I know it's phosphorus from runoff. It can be animal feces, can also cause what's happening, but I think it needs to be under control because it's affecting market value of properties.
And I can touch on that a little bit. So, the next thing that we're going to go into is actually our pond policy and procedures. So what we're actually looking at by creating this document is kind of what is the city, and this is just a draft form, but kind of looking at an introduction to what the ponds are, what their purpose are, how to keep them healthy and safe, and, and kind of what the city's responsibility is going to be, and then also educating the residents on what their responsibilities are. Like, you know, we want, we really want to educate residents that, you know, we need to work together to try and, you know, reduce the amount of, you know, just stuff that gets into them.
Grass clippings.
Grass clippings, even like washing your car, like try to, there's just different methods, like trying to keep some of the stuff out of it, and again, animal feces. And just kind of what, this is kind of a discussion I'm having with the council, kind of like, what are, what are we going to allow and what do we not allow? How can we educate residents on how to keep them healthy? Because it's definitely a group effort. And, and I know, and Dave can maybe talk about it too, is I know some algae is normal, but yeah, there's also like the other stuff you don't want too, which is a problem. And so I think that's kind of, I'm glad you came up and presented because I think I want this to be kind of our next discussion, like how are we going to work together to, to make these clean or better for everybody?
I'm sure that the residents that live on those ponds that are scum-covered with algae would be more than happy to find ways that they can
Right.
help to prevent, but we got to get rid of it first. There, I mean, there, we can't go backwards now. This is not just a matter of, okay, I won't put my grass clippings, I won't blow it out onto the street, and I'll take my little puppy and, you know, walk around with a baggie. It, it's so far past that. And so that's why I'm here and we're here is to say, we, we're hoping that you will take this as seriously as we are taking it, and feel free to come sit on our deck.
Dave, are you aware of, I mean, I know that like some cities do those, like aeration fountains
Absolutely.
to break it up, but I don't know if that's a possibility. But are there other treatments for the?
And, and I, there are, and I think we've even provided the city a letter in the past. You know, it gets to be, it's, it's an ongoing, it's cost and it's, it's ongoing maintenance that you have to do. From what I've seen from the aerators is usually end up with a little clear spot around the fountain.
Yeah.
And, and the rest of the, you know, but yeah, it's, it's all the above. It's, it's the phosphorus, it's the fertilizer, you know, I mean, it's, it's kind of this double-edged sword. It's, it's doing what it's supposed to, which is collecting all that nasty stuff, and then it kind of looks like it does.
And the water that's underneath it is what goes away
Right.
and is left on top.
Yep, yep.
Is a thick, I mean, when the, when the geese are swimming through and they leave a trail behind them.
Yeah. So what I, what I would say is that that's, if we could continue to have that conversation with the public works committee, you know, kind of look at what kind of maintenance we want to do. We've talked about in that, in the past, and again, 45 ponds, and it, it kind of starts to add up in a hurry depending on what you do and, and how often it's required.
Right. Yeah, and some of that may be a case by case.
And, and then also, you know, if you're, if you're putting something in there to get that stuff to, to drop, you're, you're, you also, it's, it's more sediment in the pond.
Some of them are in areas where there's, they're just surrounded, there's no air movement. Some of them are out by the high, you know, the freeways where the air is blowing through. It's a little, so we'll, we'll have to look at those two at public works.
I mean, it's, it's absolutely, it's
Along with the policy and procedures on what we want to do, so.
And I would agree. I would love to see us somehow safely chemically treat. Because we do love the wildlife, but we don't like the stinky algae.
Right.
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 Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, so as you, as you already noticed, we did jump into this policy a little bit. My goal bringing this to you tonight is just, I wanted you to review a draft version of this policy and offer any comment. So, I was fortunate enough, it is really hard to come by these policies. This is so new. Pond maintenance is such a new discussion and kind of, because I think they're relatively new to developments, and then we're hitting that period where everybody's talking about this now and how to, how to do this, this maintenance. So, I was fortunate enough to work with one city that had already done a, a good portion of it, and we worked, I kind of worked off theirs and made it more for us too. But, just, again, it introduces what ponds' purpose are and how they work. And then just maintenance, kind of what the cities, as we, as we just were presented the, the plan by Dave, kind of what our ongoing responsibility will be now that we have that information about, you know, cleaning the inlets, outlets, but then eventually going in, into phase two and doing a deeper dive into probably literally the ponds and finding out what's in there. So, but then there's also the homeowner responsibility. We really have to educate residents on, and we've discussed this before, kind of, how do we get them to work with us to, with their sump pumps and, again, not releasing foreign creatures into there that shouldn't be in there, like, like pet fish and turtles and stuff. But also not dumping grass clippings in and, and preserving vegetation that, that's meant to be there and helping to filter. So, again, this is just kind of a, a draft, and I'm looking for comments. I know one thing I, I made sure to put in there was, we've had questions in the past of residents can irrigate out of it. After talking with the engineer, we both feel that this is not a good idea because it's not really the function of the pond, and it's just kind of recycling water that's already been drained in. And, and, I mean, I get, I get why it would seem attractive, but it's just kind of, it's, it's not what the ponds are meant for. So, I did put that
It's more than just that also. I mean, sometimes they'll get too low then if they're used too often, like
Right.
as dry as it's been this year. And some of that algae and stuff that we're blowing out is harmful to animals, to dogs. So for that reason.
Right, and some of those
Even if you don't have a dog, you're, the
Right, if it gets re-put on your grass
Someone else's yard, so.
Gets exposed to it. It's definitely, can be a health condition.
I think it's a good start. I think it's good. And again, I think we'll continue to take a look at this at public works and get some input also on there. I would like to see a little bit more specifically two fountains, not necessarily to aerate them, but we've had times where residents have wanted to put their own fountain in some of those too, so I think we should address that along with docks. Also, I didn't, I didn't see either of those two in there.
I thought I had put docks in there.
To pump the water. As of now, no.
Yeah, we just recommend not doing that because it has all that stuff in it, and like, sometimes if you, and maybe, again, Dave can talk about it, but like, bringing that back up, I think can be a health, cause health issues too, because, like even, even like a person or an animal getting into that pond can, it's just not healthy. It's not clean water.
I know some of our ponds have had that blue algae that is very, very dangerous to dogs, so I would not recommend putting that on my grass.
Any other comments on the, on the plan and protocol? People would like to see added or deleted just from a first look at it? I'm assuming this will come back to us a few times to really finalize it, but.
Sorry, I thought I put the docks in there, but, oh, actually, you know what, I didn't. I wanted to talk about that more with you guys.
What can we do to, see if we can address this issue that is, that they're having right now? Is there, how long are we expecting to wait? Or something like that to start happening? Whatever fixes are for that pond?
I mean, I can get your information, and I'll set up a public works meeting and see what options are available, like what we can get going on now. So I can get your, or I can see if, before you leave, if we can get your phone number or something, and I can call you guys.
Yeah, I think what you, what you'll need is, one, what are, what are the options that could potentially address that issue? And then you're going to want some cost, and is it a one-time cost? Is it an ongoing cost, you know, just so that you can understand, you know, what, what it's going to take?
With regards to docks, and, and again, we can have this conversation at a different meeting. It's, it's, we can make a very weak argument that they're, that they're not allowed right now, but it's very, it's not specifically stated in our code that they're not allowed. So it's really, it's a really weak argument that we could enforce it. But, so it would pretty much require a code, like probably a stronger code change for wording to keep those out. It, it really varies city to city if you, if, if you want them or not. It's recommended to me, the engineer, Bob Bean actually, who, who I talked to, who did this, who participated highly in this study, is that they can cause issues if they break, if they fall apart, if they, if they get into the, clog the areas that, like the inlets or the outlets, or, really, people aren't supposed to be using the ponds recreationally anyways because they're, for health reasons, but, Dave, if you want to talk?
Yeah, well, I, I would say that we have, we have a couple of different categories here though, too, is some of the ponds are in easements. I think for the purposes of controlling, maintaining our stormwater features and those easements, you know, and I, this is a city attorney issue, but that you have certain rights is to be able to maintain that facility, and if you have things that are getting in there causing obstructions, I would say that that's, that's not okay. The other category is, as we started to move through the developments, the newer ones, those aren't in easements. Those are city-owned property. And I would say you have absolute control of the ponds that are on your city-owned public property to say that that's not okay.
But I think we need consistency, you know, and clear, and it has to be clear consistency between, for all ponds, so. And again, we can have that at, at the next workshop, but
Yeah, let's talk about that at the public works, get a recommendation to bring to council and then see what happens.
Okay.
My thoughts would be there shouldn't be docks in these. This isn't lakeshore property. It's, they're runoff storm ponds.
It's not nice water.
No.
I wouldn't want to fall in there.
Okay, so we'll get something scheduled here in early August, Maggie?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on that? Any other comments from anyone on that plan or protocol? All right, then we'll move to six B for the water treatment plant and well project, PFO, PFA loan approval.
Okay. So in your packet is a resolution that would
Thank you for coming.
the PF, PFA loan for the water treatment plant and well project. So, we've kind of highlighted this before. This is kind of a project that we've been working on in the last year, and we've discussed at previous meetings that the way we were going to finance this, this project was through a 20-year public facilities authority bond. It's, it's just so, through this process, we're able to get a lower interest pay, bond. So with that, staff and the city engineer, we've been working with public facility authority to apply for the, for the, to qualify for the bond, and we have. Now, this is the next step to actually approve the amount of $1,169,180 to be dispersed and repaid according to the agreement, which is also in your packet. So, by approving the resolution, you would essentially be allow, approving the agreement to be signed by the city administrator and the mayor, which would approve the loan to finance these projects. So I did include kind of a repayment schedule. That's kind of what we're looking at. We're paying each year for this, for these projects over the another, the next 20 years. So with that, those documents are, the resolution and the, the purchase and project loan agreement are in the packet, so I am available for any questions on those. But that would just, that's just the next step in getting these projects moved, moved forward and
Any questions for Maggie? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 7.27, 20, 26, allowing the financing of the public facilities authority PFA bond for $1,169,180. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
So where, where does the 1 million come, come from? The, is that from the previous?
That is to cover the cost of the actual, so we went out for bid, and I, I don't have the number right in front of me. It was like 900, the low bid was
This one we were talking about earlier?
Yeah. Yep, so this is the finance, approving the financing for it.
But that number doesn't match what we
Yeah, so the other number's a little bit higher because we've also, we've already, we've pre, like, because we were projecting some of the costs already, we've paid some of the costs for engineering and stuff already. So, this is just covering
What would still be owed on the
Right, exactly.
And this comes out of?
This is out of the enterprise fund, so the water utility fund, and this has been a, in the capital improvement plan, so these were projects that we planned for, and
And that means it's fully funded from the usage?
Yes, exactly.
It's not from?
It's not levied.
It's not levied, okay.
Are rates, are rates included?
Yep, when we did the rate study, this was, this took into consideration this pro, these projects.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. City council reports. Liz, anything to report on?
Oh, sure.
Nikki?
I think, I didn't make the last council meeting, but I, we did have a park board. We just had further discussion, and then we asked Maggie to create a workable document, which she sent out, that will just allow us to move projects around to kind of see where our fund balances are and help us with budgeting every year for projects. So, we're hopeful that at the next meeting, we can really put better estimates on what year we could do certain projects, especially on some of the bigger projects we still want to do, when we could be able to do that, and how would we pay for it.
And you see that the, because the next one falls on the primary, it's canceled, the August one.
Yeah, it is canceled, but we'll reschedule. I'll send you guys out an email.
Yep, perfect.
Tyce, anything to report on Eric? And I have nothing myself to report on either. So with that
Let me check on the internet and see if they can get it to work.
Yeah, I got booted off too. Yeah, I got booted off too.
Yeah, we can.
It's been running slow all day too.
There's no internet.
Yep.
And we can reboot that if we need to. Um, so with that, then we, we are going into closed session. We're going to have a closed meeting, uh, permitted under Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point zero-five, subdivision three A, for the purpose of conducting the city administrator's performance review. So with that, we will go into closed session. We'll ask, um, everyone to leave, please. And then, um,
And we do have a workshop, so afterwards.
We could stop the recording for this, that would be great. And, Janelle, maybe you could check on the internet? See it, does, does it reboot? Can we reboot it, or? Okay, we've concluded our closed session, so we have entered back into the regular council meeting. Quick update, that was a six-month check-in from the, for the city administrator. Uh, it was recommended at her last, uh, annual appraisal, uh, in December of twenty nineteen. And we will continue on with her regular annual appraisal, review, uh, well, performance appraisal review, December twenty twenty. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Like that motion?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. We are adjourned.